I'd like to start the legislation for, to be discussed in our pre-meeting conference. I'm going to jump around a little bit. I'm going to go to number, resolution number eight. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Aiello. It's a resolution authorizing the conveyance of Chancellor Apartments by Municipal Housing Authority to the City of Utica to impact Utica. Robert Kelly's here, the CEO. A very nice gentleman. He brought us some, it looks like, a nice picture that we can view. If the council doesn't mind, I'd like him to give us a brief presentation of what the municipal housing is doing. I'm sorry, People's First, and we'll go from there. You all right?
Thank you, and good evening. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation this evening to the common council. So President Gleaney, distinguished members of the common council, Judge Guaramone. My name is Bob Kelly. I have the privilege of serving as the executive director of People First. To provide some context to what's before you tonight for consideration, let me just, if I could, indulge you. Just to allow me to provide some background as it pertains to the Municipal Housing Authority and People First. The Housing Authority was one of the first housing authorities created in this country, if you're not aware, under the public housing law of 1937. In fact, it was one of the first 10 housing authorities created in this country. And the first development that was created was Adrian Terrace, 200 units of affordable housing on Armory Drive and Culverap. And in fact, 80 years later, those units still remain viable affordable housing units for people that are in need and are vulnerable. Fast forward to today, the People First has the privilege of serving approximately 4,000 residents with over 1,300 units of public housing in this community. And we have, back in 2013, we took the opportunity to look at ourselves and to look at our mission and to determine whether or not we felt that mission should be changed and revised in order to become more people-centric. And in 2013, we made a decision that we had to be more than a keep. We did a great job in terms of providing safe, affordable, clean housing for people, but we needed to be more than that. We needed to be people-friendly. We needed to be people-focused. We needed to be people-driven. So at that time, we implemented a quality-of-life management philosophy, which was predicated on three basic tenets. One, we had to be more visible to our tenants and within the community. Two, we had to engage in enhanced communication, both internally within our organization and externally within the community. And three, we had to interact with the people that we served. Because we felt that if, in fact, you adhered to those three basic tenets, we would have the opportunity to build a rapport and a relationship with the people that we serve. And when you build rapport and relationship, as all of you can attest, you develop trust and confidence. And the outgrowth of trust and confidence is that you build and you establish credibility and accountability. And that's exactly what's occurred over the course of the last nine years. And then in 2021, we made a decision that our name should be synonymous with our mission. And so we rebranded ourselves as People First. And if, in fact, you look at what we've done over the course of the last 10 years, it's truly in concert with our mission. Our mission is very simple. To enhance the quality of life of the people that we serve within this community. And I think that we've done a good job as it pertains to that. So two years ago, we said to ourselves, okay, we've engaged in a cultural transformation. We've rebranded ourselves. We've created trust and rapport and relationships with the people that we serve. What's our next move? And our next move was to engage in a process that we called Impact Utica. We realized that our housing stock was aged and antiquated, had really extended beyond its useful life. And so we have worked over the last two years to develop a plan to reposition our entire housing portfolio. Had to be done, or it has to be done, in phases. And the first phase was to take our Chancellor Apartments, 93 units, built in 1978, serves a senior and disabled population base, and look to totally renovate that project, do a substantial gut renovation, and do it with the residents staying in place. Because the one thing that you don't want to do is to try not to engage in a huge disruption to the people that we serve. So over the course of the last 12 months, as units became vacant, we've taken them offline. So now we have 12 units within Chancellor that are offline. And the scope of the project entails taking 12 units at a time, with the first 12 vacant units being the first to be fully gutted and renovated, and then use that, those 12 units, as swing space to relocate 12 additional people from their apartments into the newly renovated apartments and do that on an eight-cycle basis. So that at the end of our 18 to 20 months of renovations, we will fully have renovated all of our 93 units. We will have created additional interior and exterior amenities, new entrance ways, new roofs, new mechanical systems, new atrium windows in our community space. And we believe, again, it creates a new living environment for the people that we serve. The second piece of the Phase One is that we have acquired title to a 90,000-square-foot warehouse known as Broad Street Warehouse on the corner of Mohawk and Broad Street. And our intentions are to create 74 loft-style units of affordable housing. Being able to, and to utilize that space for a myriad of affordable purposes. Not be burdened by, you know, this many units for disabled, this many units for homeless, this many units for at-risk youth, but to allow it to meet the community needs as those needs arise during the course of operation. And so the details with regards to this project are as follows. We have worked hard to get to the point where the state will meet on February 16th, the Housing Finance Agency, to approve this project. The goal is to be at a closing table by the end of March of 2023. The scope of the project is such that we believe that the construction period is approximately 24 months. The total project cost is $99 million. The lion's share coming from both federal and state low-income housing tax credits, historical tax credits, and we'll have a $5.6 million hard debt alone that will be repaid over the course of 30 years. The additional components of this is that the City of Utica has committed to us, and we've worked very hard with Commissioner Thomas, to secure a $500,000 home loan that will be built into the revenue equation for purposes of this renovation. We have submitted an application to the planning board, which was reviewed and approved. We have submitted a pilot application to the UIDA. We've received an initial authorizing resolution on November 2nd as it pertains to that. We had a public hearing on December 6th. And the final authorizing resolution will be presented for consideration to the UIDA at their next meeting on February 8th. The pilot is for 33 years. The first three years of which we will pay the real property taxes as then imposed and assessed upon the properties, with those taxes not to exceed the tax burden that's reflected in the 2022-2023 tax year. And then thereafter, for the 30-year term, remaining 30-year term, as it relates to Chancellor, the taxes would be based upon a formula that's predicated on 1% of the effective gross income for the facility. And as it relates to Broad Street, that 30-year term would be based on a formula that is equated upon 7% of the adjusted gross, of the effective gross income for the project. We also did something unusual as it pertains to this project. And I hope that it's something that everyone in this room can concur with. You know, we see a renaissance taking place in this community. But if you talk with some of these small and medium-sized contractors, they say we're having difficulty being able, from a capacity standpoint, from a performance bond standpoint, to be able to bid on these projects. So what we did purposefully is that we broke this project into smaller scopes. So we didn't just say Broad Street is going to be X dollars and somebody's going to come in and just bid the entire project. We broke it into smaller scopes for a reason. To allow local, small, and medium-sized contractors, who don't have the performance bond capacity, to be able to bid on this project. And we're proud of that, because it's the right thing to do. While this community struggled, they struggled. And while this community thrives, they should play a role in that renaissance. The second piece of the equation is that we believe that apprenticeship programs, internships, and Section III requirements should be fulfilled to the greatest extent. And we'll just give you an example. When we built Roosevelt Residence, a 50-unit scattered site development in Corn Hill, we had, at any one given time, 20 to 25 apprentices, Section III, which are your own residents, working in the field. And we're proud to say that six to eight of them were hired by the contractors that they apprenticed for or did work for once the project was ended. So those apprenticeship opportunities and Section III rules are going to be given great weight as it pertains to allowing to use this project to try to allow people to generate skills to make their abilities more marketable once the project has concluded. The last thing I'll say is, is there need within this community as it pertains to this? And the answer is undoubtedly yes. You know, despite the fact that a lot of our units are antiquated and old, our occupancy levels remain at 97% and 98%. Chancellor Apartments has been at 98%, 99%, and 100% over the course of the last three years. Our waiting lists are just growing. The demand for safe, clean, and affordable housing is at an all-time high. The demographics within this community support the fact, support the need for additional affordable housing. Some people asked us back in 2017, when we built Roosevelt Residence, as to whether or not there was truly a need for that. And here's what I can tell you that we've gleaned since that time from Roosevelt. We did a microsite, which allowed people to submit pre-applications in terms of expressing interest for Roosevelt residences. We received over 700 pre-applications for 50 units. When the application period opened for Roosevelt Residence, we received over 500 actual housing applications for Roosevelt. Roosevelt has had 100% occupancy since it was opened. The waiting list for Roosevelt, as we sit here today, is four to five years in length. So the demand is real, the need is real, and we believe that, at the end of the day, you will be proud of the final product. And once we're done, we move to Phase Two. And Phase Two will be the redevelopment of our Adrian Terrace, Andy Peters, and FX Matt project, 350 units, and all projects thereafter. And as we sit here today, we envision that, as it relates to the redevelopment of those sites, we will tear the sites to the ground. And we will rebuild from the ground up. Because they have truly outlasted their useful life, and we need to get away from the Band-Aid approach and do something that's truly comprehensive and truly enhances the living conditions for the people that we serve. So I appreciate your indulgence, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. The resolution itself, let me just say this. So under Section 58B of the public housing law, in order for us to transfer the property by way of a lease from the Housing Authority, or People First, to an entity that needs to be established for low-income housing tax credit purposes, and that entity is called Impact Utica Chancellor Broad LLC. Impact Utica Chancellor Broad LLC. In order for that to happen, we need to go through a series of approvals. One being a common council resolution. The second being New York State Controller's Office approval. The third being New York State Attorney General's approval. And we can't be in front of the Public Finance Agency on the 16th without those three approvals. They're mandated requirements. So the resolution that's in front of you for consideration this evening essentially authorizes the transfer of the property between the entities that I just mentioned. It also indicates that the balance of the bonds that were financed back in 1981 to finance the construction of Chancellor, that remaining balance being approximately $157,000, will be paid off at closing. And so there will be no additional debt on those bonds moving forward. And lastly, the resolution authorizes the mayor of the City of Utica to be a signator to the requisite documents that need to be executed in order to fulfill the purpose of the resolution.
Okay, very good. Is there any questions for Bobby on this legislation? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So first of all, just, you know, all sort of commendation for providing good, safe, quality housing for the people of Utica. I think you all do a great job, and I really appreciate it. I just have like a general question, and maybe it's based in a naivete, but... So like the Adrian Terraces, you were saying, need to be completely torn down and rebuilt. And how old, again, did you say that they were?
How old?
Yeah.
They were built in 1939.
Okay. So they're not as old as my house, but my house doesn't need to be torn down and rebuilt. Like, what accounts for that? Is it just how they were built in the first place?
I think, I think that...
Can you let, can you let Mr. Kelly answer? Can you let Mr. Kelly answer the question? Can you let Mr. Kelly answer the question? Great.
Sure. I mean, that certainly plays a role. I mean, you have a lot more occupants, tenants, on a rollover basis occupying these units, number one. Number two, they're barrack-style, institutional-looking, do not have the requisite floor plans that are necessary for people to live there, no downstairs bedrooms, no downstairs baths. So, you know, from that standpoint, they just really aren't conducive to today's standards.
Okay.
Number one. Number two is that, as you look at what affordable projects that have been built, the floor plans, the visuals, the amenities that are provided to people have changed dramatically since 1939 till now. So our feeling is, is that there's no reason that socioeconomic status should preclude a person from living in a higher standard and a newer structure.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Bobby?
Yeah, one question. House of Gardens, that's part of your...
It is.
Now, what do you plan for that?
That, that, that will be, that will be Phase Three. So Gilmore Village and Humphrey Gardens are sister projects. So they will be renovated as part of the, of Phase Three. And with the exception of the units that we built there in 2015, Buildings D and E, Closer to School Road, that complex will be torn down and be rebuilt as well.
That was built a lot later than 30 years ago.
It was. It was built in the 50s and 60s.
And Carcatch is independent?
Yeah, we have no, we have nothing to do with Carcatch.
Mark?
Um, so we, like the 12 we were doing, cancel part. You're going to reposition it, probably for more square footage out of it soon, right? So is that going to take away from, or is it going to change for...
Yeah, the footprint's not going to change. The building's not going to change, except for a revised entrance way. So there will be just, there's 93 units there now, and there'll be 93 units. The only thing is, we're going to blow open walls. We're going to have an open floor concept. So it's, we're going to change the interior of the units, but in terms of the, the square footage is not going to change.
Any other questions?
I have some.
Go ahead, Sam.
I have some.
And I'm, just bear with me through, through a little bit of this. So can you just explain who's on your board now?
Sure, we have...
Because I don't know if it was an up-to-date...
Lou Prada is our chair.
Okay.
Mark Kelly is our vice chair. We have two tenant resident commissioners that are elected by their peers.
Okay.
That's Linda Zula and Damari Smaldonado. And then we have Nelson Santiago, Lucretia Hunt, and Hanka Grobavika.
Kevan.
That's it? Okay.
I call her Grobavika, so I...
I'll defer to you with regards to your pronunciation.
Okay, so now the corner of Broad Street and Bleecker Street is going to be a 74-style, 74 apartment loft?
Broad and Mohawk.
Broad and Mohawk, excuse me. That's going to be a 74?
Correct.
So I guess, where's the difference in when you look at like a regular loft-style apartment that's built, say, like, I don't know, 520 Seneca Street, right? Like, they don't have that many loft apartments through the square footage that what they want. So you're talking about bathrooms upstairs, bathrooms downstairs. How do you plan on fitting 74 loft apartments in the square footage of the building that you have and still be able to accommodate that loft-style complexity of what you're trying to get people? So like, say, somebody, I don't know, moves out of the area, right? They're bringing their kids. They're bringing everybody here, and they want to move in that loft-style apartment. Like, what changes that, that style of that Genesee Street feel to what you're trying to accommodate in a loft-style feel?
First of all, you know, there's income restrictions as to who can live there.
Oh, I agree. I would never be able to afford to live in one of those apartments.
No, but, but that's not, that's not, that's not, these are not going to be market rate.
Right.
These are going to be affordable. So essentially, you pay 30% of your adjusted gross income towards your rent. And there are income restrictions associated with how much you can make. 90,000 square feet is a, is a, is a large building.
Right.
These, this building has 16 to 18-foot ceilings. Those are all going to stay and be exposed. Has anybody walked through Globe Mill? This is really going to be a Globe Mill.
And I got to be honest with you. I mean, for, I know for the police and fire department, it's been a little bit of an issue as far as sprinkler systems and the police department having to respond, like... I guess that's a totally other thing that I really don't want to get into. But again, I guess that, that style apartment, is it really that market rate that you're trying to attract the, the people that you want to attract to those, to those buildings?
You know, you know, everybody's got a different taste. That's why Baskin Robbins has 37 flavors, Maestro. So I get it. I can say this, that when I walked through Globe Mill, just for example, I was blown away. And I could say that I could live there, and it hurt me. I liked the loft style. I liked the... I, I liked the loft style, I liked the, the look. Some people don't. But, you know, we have to do a market study. And the market study supports units, not necessarily loft-style units. But, based upon what we see on an everyday basis, in terms of the condition of units within this community that people live in, true squalor, I think that we will be overburdened with the number of people that want to move into Broad Street.
And, and I guess this kinda gets back to my original point, and it has nothing to do with People First, has nothing to do with anybody that wants to build, build market-rate housing. I guess that gets back to my point is, I think ninety-nine million dollars sounds like a great number, right? It's more than the city of Utica's budget almost times two. But again, you're investing ninety-nine million dollars into apartment complexes. Why can't, and this is, and this has nothing to do with you, I guess this is just a question that I have, you're involved in this, this style apartment, you know, marketing. Imagine if we put ninety-nine million dollars back into a neighborhood and, and we were able to rehab those type styles apartments where it's like, you know, one or two-family occupied homes, where that's where I grew up. I grew up in a one or, you know, two-family home. I mean, but you actually had pride in it, you had people that were owning these apartment complexes. It wasn't dependent upon the fact that you now had to move into a market-rate housing based on that fact. So, I guess it goes back to the, to that, to that component. Has People First ever looked into the fact of taking that ninety-nine million dollars? And I obviously understand how that, that monetary amount can go a certain way. Have you ever looked in the fact of trying to rehab the homes that we have, actually the housing industry that we have inside the city? Because guess what? Some of these houses I wouldn't live in. I would rather go to a People First apartment because you've got absentee landlords, people that don't care about their apartments. So, where do we get to a point as a city that say, hey, listen, this is a stepping stone for people to wanna go, because from the original, let's say quote-unquote, goal, right, is this is a stepping stone for people to go to owner-occupied housing. Where does this now get people to get to that point? Is, is it no longer that goal to, that you want that owner-occupied housing? Or is it you, now you want people to just continue on that People First route where that's that owner, or, excuse me, the, the low-income housing that matches their type of goal?
Listen, it's, it's a good question, okay? And the choice is not ours. The state of New York has funding silos, and they have criteria associated with those funding silos. And they have, they have over the course of the last ten years placed over five billion dollars into the affordable housing silos. But they haven't placed much money, if any, that I'm aware of, with regards to rehabilitation of existing housing. So, it's not as though this is our choice, Samantha.
No, I agree.
These are, these are the funding silos that are available to us. We'd love, we know about, when I first started ten years ago, we had some money for purposes of rehab. And we got ten times the number of people versus the amount of money that was available to us. But we don't see those kind of funding opportunities coming out for rehab. So, these are to create new units, and we're just taking advantage, like every other community is, of these funding silos. So, we have to live within the restrictions and limitations.
Sam, we need to wrap this up as soon as possible.
And, and it's fine, and I've got about twenty more questions, so I'll try...
You can ask them privately if you want.
Yeah, but I don't want them privately, I want them publicly, because I think it is important, Frank, you know? But, back, remember Brian, that, I forgot what it was, it was like Tier Five, Title Five, they went back and they built all those multi-dwelling units in the Cornhill area, and they built new sidewalks, and they, they remodeled all the houses. Hope Six.
Hope Six, that was our project.
And that's what I'm saying, so I guess, I guess, why are we continuing with it? And, and it's, I don't know, I don't... They could be.
They're gonna land.
But, but that's what I'm saying, like, I guess pushing forth the effort of, we've already knocked down how many apartment complexes through, through these type of initiatives of low-income housing inside the city? We've seen it behind the, behind the Utica Auditorium, we've seen it in the Cornhill area, we've seen it in West Utica. And I guess we've seen now the success with that Hope Five project, that people are actually taking pride into the communities that they're building. And that's all I'm saying is that, I guess, and, and like I said, it's not directed towards you. It's directed towards everybody, just kinda looking at the bigger picture of, we have neighborhoods that are actually deteriorating. I mean, I drive down streets, the streets look like crap, there's garbage all over the place. I guess, guess, trying to rehab the, the infrastructure that we have is more important to me than spending ninety-nine million dollars in investment on, on a rehab of an apartment complex and then the build of a new one. And I just, I'll leave it at that, and I know that's not your fault.
No, I, I appreciate it.
I understand what you're, what you're trying to do. The other question that I have is that you said it's a twenty-four-month construction project. Who are your contractors?
Well, that, those are being chosen now. Our, our general contractors are co-developer, which is called the Vecino Group. Vecino Grib Group.
Vecino? Now where are they at?
Vecino, V-E-C-I-N-O, they're out of Springfield, Missouri. They, they developed the Astoria Apartments on Bleeker Street.
Okay.
But, as, as a GC, they're going to hire subcontractors.
Yep.
So, they, they put out requests for, for proposals within the last month. And a real comprehensive list that they sent these things, that sent these proposals to was published on the Mohawk Valley Builders Exchange. We had walking tours for contractors at both Chancellor and Broad Street approximately two weeks ago. We had a number of contractors in attendance. And so, the, the bids are in the process of being received. So, we haven't chosen the subcontract.
Do you, so now, do you see it like a delay in any of this? Because I mean, I only ask this because we can't even get roofs on some of our firehouses inside the city because of lack of materials. And now, you're telling me that you could build an entire apartment complex within twenty-four months. And I guess that's kind of my problem, like, maybe we should be talking to some of your contractors to see if we can, to see if we can get some of this going inside the city.
We, we asked those, those questions. If, if in fact this was approved a year ago, you know, Broad Street's gonna spend a lot of money on windows, because you're gonna open up all of those concrete openings, so you have full floor-to-ceiling windows. The lead time for windows a year ago was eleven months. We've been told that we can get the windows in, in eight to ten weeks, as we sit here today.
All right.
So, we've asked those pointed questions, and it's a great question. And we've gotten opinions that some, some items still are hard to get, but it shouldn't have a, a noticeable impact on our twenty-four-month window.
Well, I mean, maybe if the city's gotta piggyback on some of your contracts, I mean, maybe even for a little rate between you guys and, and what we're doing inside the city, I mean, that's something that we should definitely be looking into as well.
Okay. Well, Sam, can we get tons of legislation?
I mean, I got forty more questions that I can, I'm only gonna, you know that. I appreciate that you answered.
Bobby, thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you for your time and consideration, we appreciate it.
Okay, council members, let's get to the remaining pieces of legislation, please. Oh, there's only one more thing towards that actual piece on number eight. Bleeker Street spelled wrong. It's B-L-E-E-C-K-E-R, not B-L-E-E-K-E-R. So, we just gotta make sure that we... Clerk, can you clarify the typo when we change?
Bleeker Street.
Bleeker Street was...
Reborn.
Yes. I mean, if it's spelled differently than every other piece, it's gonna be spelled right up. You said number eight? Yep. Whereabouts? First, first paragraph.
About four seventeen.
Oh, okay, sure, yes, forgot to see. Okay. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, council members, let's get to Resolution Number One. Are we voting? Commissioner Deeds? Alissa Garshel Povich. Any, any issues? We're good?
Yeah.
All right, let's get to the next piece, number two. This is, oh, council members, how'd you say that again, Frankie?
Sabio.
Sabio. This is for that monument that Hanka Jovanovic was down here, gave us a whole pictorial about the monument that she's looking to develop in the city of Utica from Korbaka, the Palestinian-American community. Are there any questions for this monument?
So, we, the legislation has not yet settled on where it would be?
Yes, the legislation has settled on the location on the parkway, across, down the street from the Buckley Pool area, because they also need a parking area.
Okay.
Any whereabouts?
Uh, it's, there's a big, Mark knows, there's a big, big bench there in that area. Where you planted all those trees.
If it's by the, it's by the parking lot we're creating, that will work.
Yeah. And the specific location will be helped by our, our Public, Public Affairs Commissioner, Sam. All right? Our next piece...
I don't know for sure, but I would...
There's a picture of it, and the next thing? Go ahead.
So, this is, this, this proposal's going to that specific area.
Somewhere in that area.
On the parkway, because the way...
They originally wanted it by NBC.
I understand.
I met with Sandro on this as well, they're, they're happy, they're more than happy.
Yeah, I mean, I physically can't see where...
I'm not picturing it.
I know what's behind Buckley Pool and the parking lot, so you're gonna go to the parking lot and that's where you're going to go, is it?
No, it's down on the parkway a little bit.
It's not, it's not the parkway by Buckley, it's Culver.
The Polish did their General Krasny guy monument up on the parkway, the Germans did Baron Banz to Ben, the Italians, originally Christopher Columbus was down on Bleeker Street area, and it was moved up to the parkway. So, it only makes sense, since it's another ethnic group coming into the city to develop Utica like those ethnic groups did, it should belong on the parkway, somewhere on the parkway where it's accessible for them, because, you know, they're, you know, that's their area. That's where they wanted it in Utica. That's where they wanted it.
So, can you describe again where it is though, where on the parkway?
Well, that's gonna be up to the engineers at the end of the day, but either way, it's gonna be on the, in the parkway area.
It's opposite the track. If you picture where the track is.
Okay.
And actually, I did speak with, like, Sandro, just to make sure everything was fine, and he, he was very, in that general vicinity, yeah, they thought it would be really great.
So, does that make it a little bit farther beyond the nine-eleven memorial?
It'll be beyond that.
No, it's near Buckley Pool area.
But on the same side...
Yes.
But on the same side as the nine-eleven, a little, where it's kinda pretty empty. There's like a lot of space over there.
When it gets in front of MB, it's Culver Ave.
Right.
Or it's more by the armory.
Yeah. It's somewhere, it's somewhere in that track of land, between the crick and the...
I gotta be honest with you, like, this is something that we've gotta discuss, because the plans that he's proposing to me actually are decent plans. I mean, when you're in that white van, you can go pure off, where you can all about his legs, like, there's something to actually look at.
There's not much there, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. It's off, it's, it's not on the parkway though.
All right, guys, can we, can we get this conversation, corporate council, you willing to say something?
So, they're confusing when they're saying it's on the parkway.
I was just gonna say, we specifically want it in the spot that you're referring to. I would just make reference to that in this...
That would work fine. Yeah, we'll just... It's a little Dave Short now.
Well, we don't know, we see, we have to work with them on certain area that they want, and we're, we're within a hundred feet, let's just say, all right? So, I can't get a specific area, because, right, we're, that's all we're doing, we're giving them a general area where they can put it in within a hundred feet.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I don't, I would make sure it's clear that the general area you're referring to, and then let it be up to the engineer.
It is, it's up to the...
It's off of the corner of Culver Ave and Albany then.
Right.
Yes. Right across from Parkway Drive, so they, directly, straight from there, which is a great spot.
No, and that actually works, we're, we're developing that parking lot right there, we just, we're in process of lighting it.
So, then let's just give them like an actual, why don't we take this? And maybe value it in a, in a, because that actually...
Yeah, we can do that later on. All right, is there full council sponsorship?
There's a picture of it.
Right, as long as we can, as long as we can make that part of it, I think that we have...
I have no idea what it is, that's why it came.
You can put, attach it right to the legislation, of course.
Okay. So, contingent that we pass this based on...
Right. Our next piece, our next piece of legislation, council members, is the renaming of Harborlock Road. It's sponsored by Councilman Beatrice Joseph. Would you like to give us a quick summary?
Yes, so Harborlock Road, there was two Harborlock Roads, one over by where the old Opaquino was, there was a problem with the nine-one-one center, so we changed the, we changed the road there. So, that's why that's going now.
Okay. The first piece is, has to be voted on number three, and the second piece, because we have to advertise for it, and the second piece, which is number four, has to be referred to committee. Is there any questions?
It's gonna be Harbor, it's gonna be Harbor Lee Road down there.
Right.
Harbor Lock Road.
Okay, no discussions, just looking at the next...
There's a map right below it, too.
This is also sponsored by Councilman Beatrice. Joseph, you have the floor on the next one.
So, same type thing through the nine-one-one center, however, they had, where am I here? There was, it was Washington Street, but part of it was named after the mayor, Mayor Donnelly was on it. So, we're gonna keep it Washington Street, we're gonna put an honorary plaque for Mayor Donnelly, so any members of his family are not slighted or anything like that. So, both of these were basically updates through the nine-one-one center and with the construction of the harbor.
Would the council like to sponsor this altogether?
Sure.
Okay. Full, full council on that one. Round number six, Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor against her.
Okay. Hang on here.
He's been working hard.
Yeah. So...
Harbor Point Road.
Yes.
And Lee Street.
Yes, it's basically the same thing as what we just did on the other one.
Okay.
All right.
And we call for a public hearing on piece number six.
Right.
And piece number eight is, I'm sorry, piece number seven is referred to committee. Any discussions? Discussion's closed. Let's jump to number nine.
What about seven? We just said that, right?
Number nine is...
Holy cow.
The, sponsored by Councilman Irving, it's for the sale of sixteen sixty-one Stubeen Street. Councilman Irving, are you in favor of the sale?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Uh, public hearing is number nine, we need to vote on that one. And number ten is referred to committee. We're on piece number eleven, this is sponsored by Councilman Burmaster, is for the sale of fifteen oh-seven Sunset Ave. Councilman Burmaster, are you in favor of the sale?
I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay. Number eleven, call for the public hearing, need the vote. Number twelve is the sale, referred to committee. We're on number thirteen now, is sponsored by Councilman Irving, for the sale of one twelve Louis, Louis, I'm sorry, Louis Street, Louisa, Louisa Street. Councilman Irving, are you in favor of the sale?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Public hearing is number thirteen, we need to vote on that. And the ordinance is number fourteen, referred to committee. Councilman Irving, you're very busy, sir. We're, we're on the next piece of legislation, which is fourteen sixteen Nielsen Street. Are you in favor of the sale, sir?
Oh. That's good.
Okay. Vote on number fifteen and refer to committee, number sixteen for the sale. Okay, this is number seventeen, this is sponsored by Councilman Beatrice. Oh, okay. Councilman Beach, Councilman Beatrice, would you like to give us a summary about the legislation?
Yes, this is, actually, I believe in our public comment tonight, Mr. Costello will speak on this. This is, we are, our first mayor in our city was Mayor Devereaux. I was approached by Mr. Costello and his organization. Over on, if you go on Broad Street, you'll see a large rock with a plaque in it. They would like to put a sign, they plan on purchasing the sign, putting the sign up next to this in honor of Mayor Devereaux and the sign is in here, actually.
Terry Stitt, the home, that's very nice.
You could see the garden, like what they wanna build, this little garden around it, put some flowers on it. They are, his organization, the, I wanna make sure I'm saying it right, the Hybernians are going to purchase the sign, they're gonna take care of this property, they'd like to put flowers and make it like a little park.
Joseph, do you have the permission from the property owner or where it is?
Yeah, well, this, the property is owned by the city.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Costello has talked to, it's J and M Doors, I believe.
Yeah, that's their building.
Yeah, but it does not have anything to do with them at all.
Okay. Question they have, Councilman Beatrice, do they have a purchase price for what the sign would actually cost?
They, we didn't get to that because they're purchasing yet. The, Mr. Costello's organization is gonna purchase the sign.
I mean.
The state does not do these signs, so they're gonna go through an outside organization to do it.
So there's no cost to the city whatsoever?
No cost to the city whatsoever.
The only reason why you say that, I mean, as the first mayor of the city of Utica, I mean, maybe we can look into the city possibly purchasing the same.
He was the first elected mayor.
First elected mayor. I mean, I mean, maybe, I mean, the city asking the, I don't know what. I mean, that, that would be something that the, the city should really look into dedicating instead of you guys purchasing that.
Hopefully we get it for free.
Because, I mean, if you get it for free, fine, but I mean, whatever, I mean, we're talking about the first mayor of the city.
He's gonna talk, he's gonna talk on this.
Yeah, no, we've talked, we've talked, we've talked about it with you, so. We'll see if we can find.
He's got an organization that's gonna purchase the sign.
It would be nice that the city do something for its first elected mayor. Would the full council like to sponsor this?
Please.
Okay, full council sponsor. Our next piece of legislation is number eighteen, it was given to us during our session, is Commissioner Deeds, Mark Williamson. Any discussion? Discussion's closed. We're kind enough to be in the presence of the Bonadeiro Group, Alan Walter, did I say that right?
You did.
Alan's gonna give us a oversight on the budget and what he saw and what he found. This is a piece of it, this is not the whole thing, and I'm gonna give the table to our budget director and Alan. Can I? Sure, why would you like to go up there?
Do you want me to go up there?
Councilman Miola, is this just gonna be a brief, or is he gonna, are you gonna be able to come back? There's gonna be, there's two sections of this, so he'll be able to come back. Okay, perfect, thank you.
I just wanna mention, so normally we have two, we have two different statements put together on our audit, nice, bound and copied. We have the audit of our financial statements and we have something called our single audit, which is all our federal dollars. We receive so much, we're required to have a separate audit. That audit is not complete. It's, it's not complete because there's a problem, it's not complete because the amount of transactions that we performed this year with all our ARPA dollars and additional testing had to be done on everything from bidding to all sorts of things. I felt it was important that Alan come in tonight. We're about to, the mayor's about to propose a budget on Monday. And I think to make educated decisions, we needed to understand what the surplus was with period ending March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
And, and I respect that, and I'll just hit the floor for two seconds and I'll be done with this, but usually we are supposed to get this the same time as the mayor gets the audit. And unfortunately, I'd seen a press release before, I had seen anything like this in front of me. So again, I find that very frustrating as a council person, that once I find out that a press release had gone out, that there's a three point eight million dollar surplus and somebody calls me and I said, I have no idea what you're talking about because I hadn't got that audit yet. So, I mean, this is, this is something as a body that I think that we have to continue to harp on, that we should get it at the same time as everybody else.
So I do, I do wanna mention, because that's somewhat of a little bit misnomer, perhaps today there was a problem, but we always, always issue the press release and send it to you at the same time, okay? Today it did not happen, I'm not quite sure why it didn't happen, but it didn't, there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no. There's not, but it's the same time again, maybe the mayor's theory of the fact that it went together. This is great news for us. And so it was on me that we had to get this out here, so that on Monday, when that, when that budget's released and the question is, why don't we know where our audit is and why don't we know what, what we had for a surplus or a deficit for the year? That would be the question. And so on Monday, it came to me that we needed to get this out. And so we rushed, I called Alan, he came in, and so he will gladly come back, once we have the single audit done. He will also answer any questions after the meeting, if you wanna put them in writing, I, I, I hope you would include me on those questions because a lot of the questions that you do ask are not questions he's gonna answer, they're budgetary questions. So I just ask that you include me, because we do, as you know, council person, I work very hard to give you whatever information you have. I told you, and as I told you last night, we're trying to get a budget out of here and as soon.
I guess, I guess, so then what is this audit on?
It's the financial statements, it's the financial statements for the year ending March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Alan, you have the floor, sir.
Let me go to the podium, sir, you know. Give my mag.
Thank you, sir.
Is the mic on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, just to clarify what Heather said. So the, the audit procedures that we do, there's two things that we do. We audit the financial statements of the city as well as the single audit. It's very, very common for governments to separate those two things, that's what we did here. The ARPA money this year, there's a ton of money that, the single audit is way more complicated this year, that's why it's not done. We received the, the final information to complete that, I'm hoping to complete it by the end, end of next week and you'll be all done with that. The financial statement audit, so the financial statement audit is what is completed, which I believe Heather provided you with copies of the, of the audit. I also did a brief PowerPoint presentation, so we're not flipping through, you know, the eighty-five page document. The PowerPoint presentation is what I would like to go through with the council this evening and open it up to any questions that I may be able to answer with regard to the audit. So if you, if you, if you wanna go through the PowerPoint, just briefly, so the the overall audit, we issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance we can give on your financial statements. That is the opinion that all the users of the financial statements, the bond rating agencies, the state comptroller's office, et cetera, will be looking for. We reported one material weakness over the city's financial reporting and we'd like to thank the comptroller's office and all the other city personnel that we work with to get the audit done for all their assistance during the audit, and audit is a collaborative effort and we can't audit what you don't provide to us. The next slide, required communications, during two thousand and twenty-two, there were no new accounting standards implemented. We noted no transactions for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance and all transactions have been recognized in the proper accounting period. Sensitive accounting estimates within the financial statements, I'm not gonna go through all of them. The most significant, significant estimate that's in your financial statements is the other post-employment benefits obligation, which is the, which is an actuarially calculated estimate of the amount of money that the city owes to its retirees and its employees who will become retirees for health insurance after they, after they retire. That number is, is reflected in your government-wide financial statements. We consider, we evaluated the estimates and we considered, and we determined that they were all reasonable in relationship to the financial statements as a whole. We had no significant difficulties in performing the audit. Management recorded all adjusting entries to reconcile the, the, the general ledgers to the, to the audit of financial statements. We had no disagreements with management and we're not aware that management consulted with any other accounts. Financial statement highlights, so the, the city, as all governments do, is required to present two sets of financial statements. Citywide financial statements, which are basically all of the funds of the city combined together plus your long-term assets, less your long-term liabilities, and then the fund-level financial statements, which are presented using the modified accrual method of accounting, which is the same method of accounting that is used for your, for your budget. These two sets of financial statements show two different pictures of the city's finances, okay? With regard to the city's statement of net position, which if you have the financial statement, is on page thirteen, the net position as of March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two, was ninety-one point five million. Some of the highlights of what makes that up, current assets, which is cash and accounts receivable, accounts receivable primarily, seventy-one point eight million. Capital assets, which is the buildings and the infrastructure and the equipment that the city owns, two hundred and eleven million. Deferred outflows, which pertain to the pension plans and, and other post-employment benefits, were sixty point nine million. Your current liabilities were seventy-two million, that's accounts payable, current portion of debt, accrued liabilities. Your longer-term liabilities were a hundred and twenty-nine point one and your deferred inflows were fifty-one point two million. And the next slide, the statement of, of activities for the city, which is on page fourteen. Your net position during the year, which is again on the full accrual method, increased by ten and a half million dollars. That's primarily the result of other post-employment benefits, debt, long-term pension and depreciation adjustments. On page sixteen, at the fund level, the fund level financial statements, or I'm sorry, page fifteen, the fund level financial statements. Your total combined fund balance was a deficit of one point six million dollars. The general fund showed a fund balance of fourteen point one million dollars, of which three million dollars was restricted. Ten point three million dollars is unassigned. The capital projects fund shows a fund deficit of twenty-four point two million dollars. That twenty-four point two million dollar deficit will reverse as the bond anticipation notes and twenty-four point six million dollars are redeemed. Okay, so the, so the overall, the, 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 the fund deficit should not be a concern for the, for the committee members because it will be reversed when the bands are redeemed. The permanent fund shows a fund balance of three point seven million and the community development fund shows a fund balance of three point two million. The next slide, your statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance, which is on page seventeen. Your total combined fund revenue was one hundred and one point nine million dollars, expenditures were one hundred and five point three. Other sources were two point four million, resulting in, in a, in a net decrease in fund balance of nine hundred and seventy-four. The general fund, your revenue was eighty-four point one million dollars and your fund balance increased by three million dollars. The three million dollars increase, which is, is what is in the restricted fund balance. Capital projects fund, you spent thirteen point two million dollars and your fund balance decreased by five point two million dollars. The next slide, budgetary highlights for the general funds, your results versus the budget. You, you had a favorable budgetary variance of five million dollars. Actual revenues versus budgeted revenues. With regard to expenditures, you had a favorable budgetary variance of three hundred thousand dollars. And with regard to other, other uses, you had an unfavorable variance of one point three million dollars. Your net overall favorable variance was three point eight million dollars versus the budget. With, with regards to your, your government auditing standards reports, we did issue, where there's one material weakness was reported, which is a repeat comment with regard to your capital projects reconciliations and closeouts and there were no, no compliance findings noted. And then the, the, the last slide, before I open it up to any questions, just a management comment. Gasby eighty-seven, Gasby is the governmental accounting standards board. There's a statement pertaining to leases that's effective for the, the fiscal year ending March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three. The city should be taking time to inventory its leases and do the analysis necessary to comply with that standard before the, before the next audit is completed. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Listen, I just got, I just have one quick one, on page fifteen, the fund balance of fourteen point one million. You've had a three million dollar restricted and a ten point three, where's the other, eight hundred dollars?
Yep, thirteen point three, fifteen point one, you're right.
Yep. Am I wrong?
Nope, you're right.
Um, it's fund balance of fourteen point one, we can discuss this later, I just, maybe.
Ten, well, you gotta add up all the pieces.
You gotta add up all the pieces, so if you look under non-spendable, that's inventory, that's solved, the prepaid expenditures, that's our insurance. So that's considered part of fund balance, we can't, it's actually allocated to something in particular. Restricted, that three million dollars, that has to do with stormwater, paving. We put some money away for city-owned buildings and repairs and then the fourth item was for retirement. We put quite a bit of money away for that. As it relates, as it relates to other aside, I, I don't really, I'm not sure what the two ten is for, I have to go back and take a look, but they do all add up.
The two hundred and ten thousand is encumbrances.
Encumbrances.
I, I do believe that it all adds up. The way that it's been presented, 'cause I share Mr. Miola's confusion there. The way that it's presented, it looks like the fund balance is fourteen point one, made up of three plus ten point three, it just doesn't.
Right, because it's actually not in the audit form, so usually you'll see the little parentheses that say that's what the negative, that's what the additional is.
Right.
I mean, this is the popular point of having a PowerPoint presentation that's put in front of you and not the actual audit that's running.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, usually they'll put all the stuff that actually makes sense, so, I mean, keep that as a no, but that's, that's why.
All right, why don't we hold our questions or we could email our questions to both our budget director and Alan on the Bonadeiro Group? And what we could do is, he will retain, he will come back and we'll go over all those questions and get things accomplished.
Do you know what I, that I, that I'll ask in between now and then, like the two hundred and eleven million dollars is great, but like, can we actually have like a whole list of what those assets actually mean?
You would like a breakdown?
Yeah.
Yeah, give it to him. Yeah, 'cause we give it to them. This is, this is.
I mean, I guess we've seen, it's not actually in the audit, so I would like to see.
No, that's no problem, I can get. Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay, are we all set with, Alan?
No.
Go ahead, Selah.
I'm all set with Alan.
Okay. Okay, Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Selah.
Before we close out the meeting, Heather, now that the fire contract negotiations are before PERB, is it true that we're legally, it's, it's acceptable for the administration to share the various proposals?
This really should be a question for the council.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
So could you share with the council the proposals on both sides of the negotiation?
Point of order, I would like our city attorney to actually discuss what could be discussed in front of this council. As everybody knows, my husband is a fireman, so whatever discussions that you may have, I actually may have to recuse myself on, on that component of it, which why it's not necessary to actually discuss some of these things unless they're, unless they've already been publicized.
Well, this is still pre-meeting conference.
Right.
Right.
Just throwing that out.
Right, again, right.
All I'm asking is if the corporation counsel could provide the counsel with certain documents.
So, so ordinarily, there are certain documents that cannot be shared, but because these documents have already been shared with PERB, if you request them from the administration, those, certain items can be shared, yeah.
So I'm requesting them from the administration to be shared with the council, please.
Now, did you meet yesterday with Bill Burrow, who was this, any attorney in the back room?
A few of us did.
A few of you did, but there was, there was a majority there, so I would, I mean, I would actually watch what was actually going on.
No, there was not a majority there.
There's, there's, there's video cameras around, so before you ask any questions and you got purviewed to that information, you better watch what you actually asked for. I'd like to close this meeting and thank you very much, council members. Mike, we'll start in about five minutes, is that okay?
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay, Mr. President.
That's all right. You know, we had a lot going on. All right, it is 7:20 February 1st, 2023. I'm going to call this meeting of the council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice Williamson, Colasimo Testa, Debrango, Gleimi, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is the minutes from the previous meeting. The minutes have been posted ECO 360 and distributed to the council members. Is there a motion to accept and waive the reading of the minutes?
I'd like to make that motion, please, Mr. President.
Second from Miola. Any opposed to waiving the reading of the minutes? All right, the minutes have been accepted. Thank you very much. Next order of business this evening is public hearing. We do have a public hearing in the following properties: the sale of 418 and 420 Mandeville Street, sale of 123 Harding Place, sale of 811 Chestnut Street, sale of 923 Blaine Dyna Street, and the sale of 1016, 1018, and 1022 Park Ave. No one signed up to speak on behalf of those properties, so the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion from the floor to remove ordinance 20, the sale of 418 and 420 Mandeville Street, from committee? Okay, that was Beatrice and Debrango. Just hold this down here. 418. This is the ordinance approving the designation of Diane Torres as an eligible qualified project sponsor under Article 15 of GML for the purpose of the sale of 418, 420 Mandeville Streets, a sum of $13,000. Public hearing was just held. That is to Diane Torres. Your votes?
Nine yeas adopted.
Do we have a motion to pull ordinance 22? Miola, Friend is the second. Any opposed? It's on the floor. It's the sale of 123 Harding Place. It's for a sum of $18,000. That is to Ka Pa. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance 24. Motion from Miola, second from Burmaster. That is the sale of 811 Chestnut Street, sum of $8,600 to Nicholas Kylie. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance 26, 923 Blaine Dyna. Miola, Burmaster is the second. Any opposed? It's on the floor for a vote. That is for a sum of $250. It's 923 Blaine Dyna Street to Nazir Buco. Your votes. I think, Councilman Debrango, you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. No, it's all right.
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance 28 for 1016, 1018, 1022 Park Ave. Miola, Friend is the second. Any opposed to pulling that from committee? It's on the floor. This is a sum of $12,500 to Art Space Projects Incorporated.
Nine yeas adopted.
That closes the public hearing. Public comment period. Two people signed up to speak this evening. The first is Thomas Warda. Please come forward. You can reach the podium. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. If you're in agreement with this, please state your name and you may begin.
Thomas Warda.
Thank you.
Thank you, President of the council, common council members, guests. My name is Thomas Warda. I'm new to Utica. Right now, I'm renting on Genesee Street. I'm excited to be here for many reasons. I'll get into one of those in a minute. I got a new job in Rome. But I got a feeling that Utica is the right place for me. Question. Who has a gas stove? Anyone want to raise their hands if you want to participate? If not, great. I see a few hands. It's definitely in the limelight lately about issues and questions about gas stoves, and everyone seems to have an opinion on it. One thing I gather is that people like a choice. They have a feeling about the best option, how to cook a certain dish, or gas just gives a certain feel. There's something about having a choice being out here that just feels American and feels good. It's something that is part of why I came here. I chose to come here for a new job and pursue my career. Something else in Utica is being forced upon me if I want to live in the city. And that's the way I have to move around the city. I feel that I am forced to have a car here. Anything else? Other options I feel are either more dangerous or inconvenient. I've tried taking the bus, and it was probably the most dangerous thing. Crossing the street Genesee right at the intersection of Shaw. Massive, over-four-lane road trying to cross that street, even myself, I felt a little uncomfortable. I've not tried biking yet around town, but I have tried walking, and dealing with all the unshovelled sidewalks is also a challenge. So it's a car. That's really the most convenient way. It's safe for me to get here, and that's how I got here today. Except in a couple areas. And one of those areas piqued my interest when I first drove through Utica. I saw the complete streets trial. I was very excited to see it, its availability, the option to choose how I get around the city, whether it be by bike, by walking, by driving. I felt that this is the way to give people the choice to move around this city in a different way. I've been a board member of preservation communities. I've been a board member of a local theater back where I'm from in Champaign, Illinois. I've been an engineering manager in my current role, and I understand that change is very difficult for people to take on, no matter what. But I think this is good change. I think it's making Utica a better place to live, and I think it's making Utica a more welcoming place full of options. And I'll leave you with a quick quote from FDR. "The country needs," and unless I mistake its temper, "the country demands bold, persistent experimentation. It is common sense to take a method and try it. If it fails, admit it frankly, but above all, try something." And I wanted to thank the council for trying something as I'm trying something and moving out here to start my new life. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. Thank you, guests.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening and the last speaker, Pat Costello. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
You may begin. Thank you. State your name.
Patrick Costello. First off, I want to thank a couple of Councilmen Joe Beatrice, Katie Ayello, and the judge for their help with this ordinance to get this signed for John C. Deveraux. Long overdue, a great Utican, a great citizen, a great American. And our group, the agent owner of Hibernians, matter of fact, we named our division the John C. Deveraux Division in honor of Mr. Deveraux. We would like to see this sign to commemorate his home. His home on the corner of Second and Broad was the first Catholic mass was held at his home in the Utica area. He was an entrepreneur, started the Savings Bank of Utica when they were digging the Erie Canal. The Irish immigrants, you know, if they did scrape a few pennies together, he was the one who kept it in a lockbox for them. The friend of everybody, a very charitable man, and a great legislator and a great mayor. And this honor should have been a long time ago, but we're glad it's coming to fruition, hopefully, by this action tonight. There was some talk about purchasing the sign. We're going through the William G. Pomeroy Foundation. It's a foundation that funds historical markers. And the state of New York got out of the business a while back. So the first step to this foundation is to get the legislative body where the sign will be to sign off on it. So that's what's in front of you tonight. So hopefully, that'll be a positive vote, and we can move forward. But the agent owner of Hibernians will purchase the sign if this doesn't pan out. We will maintain it, paint it, garden. We plan on putting a little bench there, maybe in some, you know, some bushes or whatever. It'll be nice. It'll be an asset to the city, and we promise to take care of it forever. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to talk and bring this to you, and I hope all your decisions are as easy as this one. I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment period this evening. We have no guests this evening. We have no communications from the mayor. We do have some officers here. So Corporation Council, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
UPD?
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thomas?
Nothing to report.
All right. Everyone must have comments tickets. We have no cash reports this evening. So we will move on to petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First district, Councilmember Katie Ayello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had the presentation by Mr. Bob Kelly from People of Hers, so wanted to say thank you. And I remember one of the first times I got a call from any constituent in the area when I, after I sworn in, was from somebody in the apartments, at Chancellor Apartments. They were originally concerned about, you know, the renovations and the switch out. They've heard horror stories of other places. And you guys have taken care of them every step of the way. They sing a whole different tune, and they did rapidly. It was just a matter of how you sit down with your tenants one-on-one and make this like a great experience is something I hope is modeled throughout the rest of the city, throughout these renovations and projects. So thank you for the presentation, but also how you take care of the people here. And the other thing I want to cover is next Wednesday is the West Utica Neighborhood Association meeting at 6 o'clock, Irish Cultural Center. So I'll be there along with Amy and Anthony out there, and I hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thanks. Second district, Councilmember Robert Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Katie, thank you for mentioning the West Side meeting with Amy and Anthony. It's always fun to go, entertaining and educational. So unfortunately, I can't be there. I'll be out of town. But thanks again for mentioning, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Third district, Councilmember Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Fourth district, Councilmember Majority Leader Frank Ayello.
Mr. President, I yield my time to my colleague. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Venice Irvin. A lot of pressure now.
Yeah, it is. I don't really have anything. I just want to thank the police department for their quick response to the recent violence in the Cornell area or in Ward 5. They're getting to the shootings and the shop fires pretty quick. So I just want to thank you guys for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sixth district, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Council Large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing.
Council Large Samantha Colasimo Testa.
As much as I always have something to say.
Yeah, you got something. Just come on.
I literally got nothing else to say tonight. Yeah, I'm speechless. So thank you. I'll yield my time to my colleague to the right.
Set up. Council at large and president pro temp, Frank Debrango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one quick thing. I know there was a press release the other day. The city come out with a press release regarding City of Utica administration and MVHS officials and their agreement to hire a consulting firm for the vacant St. Elizabeth campus. I think that's a great idea. You know, a lot of the people in South Utica, you know, it just kind of gives them the opportunity to solidify, you know, what the neighborhood's going to be and what it's going to look like. So I'm hoping the consulting firm comes back with some positive news. I think it's a great step forward, and I commend both MVHS and the administration for doing so because it is very important piece of property in South Utica. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the legislation. Proposed resolution number one is a commissioner of deeds. Let's get to that right here. Priscilla Garcia-Hatch. This is moved by Miola, second from Friend. It's Commissioner of Deeds, term ending December 31st, 2024. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Can we just move on to proposed resolution number 18? It's another commissioner of deeds. This one is for Mark Williamson. Again, the term ending December 31st, 2024. Moved by Miola, second by Burmaster. Your votes. We didn't need the, it's nine yeas adopted. We didn't need the Thursday rule for that, correct?
No.
Okay. All right. Proposed ordinance number two is an ordinance authorizing the construction and placement of a statue described and known throughout the world as Sebele. Is there a?
I'd just like to make a motion that the only thing that we do is.
Hang on one second.
Oh, sorry.
I need someone to move. All right. We got a first and second.
Sure.
Clerk, do you have that? All right, would you like the floor now?
Yeah, the only thing that I would ask is that we just kind of get a location of where we're going with this project. I mean, I support it in any location, but just to know where it is is kind of important to me, so.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are we voting on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance three is a resolution providing for the publication of proposal to change the name of Harborlock Road to Harbor Way. Otherwise known as a public hearing. Let's see. Oh, no, we're just going to publicize this. All right, whereas a proposal's been made to rename Harborlock Road in the Harbor Point area, whereas Second Class City's Law 99 provides that no ordinance altering the name of any street shall be passed by the common council unless such an ordinance shall be passed at least once in each of the two successive weeks in the official paper or papers. Be it resolved, the city clerk is hereby directed to publish the proposed ordinance in the official newspaper of the City of Utica once in each of the next two successive weeks. Your votes.
Motion, Mr. President.
This is moved by Beatrice. Who's the second? Miola? Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer.
Nine yeas adopted.
Ordinance number four to committee, sir.
Second?
Second.
Any opposed? It's in committee. Okay. Proposed resolution number five, sponsored by Beatrice. Do we have a second? Miola is the second on that. Placement of an honorary street sign for Mayor Charles H. Donnelly on Harbor Point Road. Be it resolved, the common council of City of Utica authorizes the placement of an honorary street sign naming Harbor Point Road as Mayor Charles H. Donnelly Drive to recognize Mayor Donnelly's service to the City of Utica.
Mr. President, we did decide to go full count on that. Yes.
Okay. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Okay. This is another publication. Resolution number six, providing for a publication of proposal to rename portions of Washington Street and Lee Street West. Be it resolved, the city clerk is hereby directed to publish the proposed ordinance in the official newspaper of the City of Utica once in each of the next two successive weeks. This is for Harbor Point Road as stated. You got the second already? All right, your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer ordinance number seven to committee.
Second from Friend. Any opposed? It's in committee. Our proposed resolution number eight, one we had a presentation on earlier, says a resolution authorizing the conveyance of Chancellor Apartments by the Municipal Housing Authority of the City of Utica to Impact Utica Chancellor/Brage LLC. Clear the floor, please. This is sponsored by Ayello, second from Miola. Your votes. Is that, just making sure. We're good? Okay. All right, it is passed. This is a resolution.
Eight yeas adopted.
All right. Proposed resolution number nine, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1661 Stubege Street. This is by the Urban Renewal Agency to Claudio Edmundo Moyu Dumbai Avila for a sum of $40,000. The public hearing will be February 15th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Your votes on the public hearing.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer ordinance number 10 to committee.
All right. This is an ordinance approving the designation of Claudio Edmundo Moyu Dumbai Avila as an eligible qualified project sponsor. It's the sale of the property. Any opposed? It's in committee. Thank you. Proposed resolution number 11, moved by Burmaster, second from Miola. This is 1507 Sunset Avenue to Blanco and Sun Realty for a sum of $250. The public hearing will be held on February 15th at 7:00 PM. Your votes on the public hearing.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer ordinance number 12, the sale of 1507 Sunset Avenue to committee.
Friend is the second. Any opposed? It's in committee. Proposed resolution number 13 is calling for a public hearing on the sale of 112 Luisa Street. This is to George Torres for a sum of $250. Public hearing to be held on February 15th, 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer ordinance number 14, the sale of 112 Luisa Street to committee.
Debrango's the second. Any opposed? Proposed resolution 15, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1416 Nielsen Street to Vimal Patel for a sum of $5,000. Again, February 15th, 7:00 PM. Second, that's Miola. Well, this is moved by Irvin.
Yes.
So Miola's the second on this one. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer ordinance number 16 to committee for the sale of 1416 Nielsen Street.
Second from Debrango. Any opposed? It's in committee. Proposed ordinance 17 is sponsored by Councilmember Beatrice. Is there a second? All right. Williamson is the second on this one, and.
It's all full count?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. This is full count. This is an ordinance authorizing the placement of a sign designating the location of the residence of the City of Utica's first elected mayor by the ancient order of the Hibernians, John C. Deveraux Division. Being ordained that the common council of City of Utica hereby approves the erection of a sign and display area that incorporates as part thereof an existing monument commemorating the first offered holy sacrifice of the Mass by Reverend Paul McQuaid in 1813, which is also the site of the home of Utica's first mayor and benefactor, John C. Deveraux. Be it further ordained, such permission is granted upon the following conditions: prior to the performance of work, et cetera, prior to any construction or installation, et cetera. The ancient order of the Hibernians agrees to defend and indemnify, et cetera. All work shall comply with the requirements of the Americans with Disability Act. Upon proper completion, the city hereby gratefully accepts the improvements as a gift to the City of Utica. Did you get the second? Okay. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, there's not enough. I'd like a motion to vote.
Okay. Good evening.